Have you seen the paper yesterday about teachers been teaching in the neighborhood that are moving back to their schools? And they have been moved into schools for improvement, improvement and that, you see where that is? That's gonna be really scary, whatever that's worth. I'm hoping that won't put us in a predicament. And I didn't think it would, but I just said, "Oh, is that not interesting?" Well, I would think so. I think we need to watch it, but... Put your chair up.
I'd like to call and pick out a board education order at this time. Uh, pledge allegiance to everybody who stands, or ask that, uh, inch of course.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good and horrible liberty and justice for all.
This time I call on the raffle up to do a moment of silence. This time I ask everyone to bow their heads for a moment of silence for in-town, in-county families. Thank you. This time we do, uh, routine business, uh, adjustments to the agenda. Improving. I got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Polar expression, at this time I call Kathy Herring.
Thank you. Um, it saddens me, especially to be here tonight, uh, because I wrote and we've talked about something positive and I think and over the summer. Um, it also frustrates me because I feel like my being here really doesn't make a difference, you know? I have three children in public schools here in Pitt County, and I hope that doesn't make me an outside interest. I don't hear a voice in support for the proposed bylaw change and what else? This and future boards to remove a chairman or a vice chairman if it's in the best interest of the system. I believe we need to support consequences, transparency, and accountability, the same things we try to teach our children at home. I hope we can separate the issues tonight. I think every single board member should support this bylaw change. It helps this board, it helps boards in the future apply those consequences. Your vote tonight will say we'll need to support accountability and ethical behavior. The next vote will determine whether to apply this change to a correct chairman, and I predict that vote will split across familial lines. I urge you to consider carefully and separate the two issues tonight. Parents are paying attention to these votes this evening. Please set the light example and vote for this bylaw change. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Diane and Ann Smith?
Mr. Chairman, members of Pitt County Board, School Board Superintendent, Staff. Uh, on August 10th, communication from Chairman Peet regarding appeals for school assignment to distributor. I have discovered that decisions made regarding school assignments are final without further appeal or explanation. The decisions are made by a subcommittee in June and were ratified by the full board based upon the recommendation from that subcommittee. Leaving little time for affected students to prepare for what comes out of those decisions. It's not viewed that this decision-making process is well. It's unfair and it should be changed. Students in their individual situations and learning needs are ever-changing. This static process does not allow flexibility for assuring the best placements for our students, nor does allow for the fact that boards are comprised of individuals who are fable and despite their best intentions, can and do make mistakes. It places a great amount of decision-making authority in the hands of only a couple of individuals on the subcommittee without requiring the full board to see the details of those deliberations, such as the case for my family. And I'm gonna have to work through that. And it's gonna take a great deal of time and effort, uh, and has potential for negative impact. And I know I'm not allowed to go into the details of that at this time. But this could be completely avoided by board having a process that is accountable for its constituents, that's kindling, and allows for fair student placements that take into account the well-being of children and not the relative appearance of flawed policies. I would like to present some confidential information to the board members now, while strongly believe would be in their interest, if the board chair will allow.
Uh, we had to run it through the attorney.
If you can give it to me, I'll make sure that all distributors and the board members will be alive.
I would like that, if it may remain in confidence.
Uh, I mean, if, uh, if I get, attorney says okay, it's fine.
They can, I, I wish I could.
Thank you very much. I thank you for this time, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And I'm grateful the opportunity to discuss the contents of that file in more detail, including specifics for my family, at your leisure. Thank you very much.
Michael Lauren?
It's good to see the board again tonight. I was here two weeks ago and, uh, I was, uh, not sure how that goes, I don't even know. Um, I asked the board, um, to reconsider an appointment of my son to be able to go to AG Cox from WH, uh, from EBA Cox.
We cannot talk about specific cases, just no chance.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I can't mention names, am I correct?
No.
I'm not, I'm not.
I can't go into specific cases.
Okay, and, um, but here's one of the things that I'm asking the board. Asking the board to reconsider. My son made honor roll with AG Cox.
Sorry, Ann, I've asked you not to go into specific cases, you're doing one.
Okay.
Please.
All right, he's having a hard time with his son?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to just continue if you're not following the direction.
Okay, all right, let's try this one more time. I stood at the last meeting and heard pity, pity bickering about personality complex. We're all grown-ups here, isn't the children what we really care about, or is it? I'm asking the board to reconsider making a pocket for my neighborhood to allow Dr. Amory to have administrative, um, decision to be able to allow these six children. I keep being told that there's 75 children that we talk about. But these 75 children are also including Windsor Subdivision, they also include West Haven. Those, those neighborhoods are four miles away from my neighborhood. My neighborhood is in Winterville and we know, we were seven, six of them miles away from AG Cox, we're seven and a half miles away from EBA Cox. I spoke to the majority of this board in phone calls asking, "Would you please reconsider this?" I've been told that, yes, we'll look at it, yes, we'll look at it. But here's the thing, and I guess I can't say this, I cannot say that my son made honor roll or anything.
You're going into specific cases, that's what.
Okay, all right. Um, but he did, uh, I guess I don't know how to say it. Um, there were no friends there because there were six children in our neighborhood that attend that school. Um, he had no friends there, and the reason for that is because none of those children were in his class. He was removed out of the feeder system and went from WH Robinson to AG Cox to South Central. He's pulled back out of the middle school, which is the formula of use of their life. He did not do as well in school as I'd hoped. I'm asking the board to think about what's in the best interest of children here. When the board had the, the, the bad time of having the DB district and, and I understand it's a thankless position, but when the board had the, the ability to do that. I came before the board then, two years ago, saying there were six children in my neighborhood, but I was told when they were 25. Now it's up to 75, but you're including residents outside of my neighborhood in this decision. Please, if you will, I'm asking one more time on behalf of my son, who really would like to do better in school this year, to be able to go back to W, uh, to E, to AG Cox away from EBA Cox. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time we have spotlight on teaching and learning, South Gravel. Uh, staff members, Ms. Cherry?
Good evening. Uh, we are here to spotlight South Gravel. We are the district technology pilot for this year. And we have with us tonight, we have, um, me, Ms. Cherry, we have Mr. Tim Long, that's our assistant principal, Ms. Michelle Money, our school improvement team chair, Mr. Mickey Gerganis, he is our instructional coach, and Ms. Lauren Boucher, she is our technology facilitator this year. Uh, we're gonna begin by describing the initiative that we have. Um, this year at South Gravel, we will have a one-to-one technology pilot in grades three through five, where every kid in grades three through five will have access to an iPad all day long for their instruction at school. Students in grades category through second will have access to 60, roughly 60 iPads to use between those classrooms. Um, we, why are we doing this? These are our desired outcomes for students. Uh, we would like for, for the technology to be used as a tool for engagement and motivation. We feel like when students are engaged and motivated, then they're more likely to retain the information that we're having for them. Um, we wanna use it as personalized, to personalize the education for our students. Uh, technology is a way to make things simpler, easier, quicker, and this will give us access to that. Uh, we want our kids to also to learn how to collaborate with one another locally, within different schools as well as globally. Technology gives them access to that. And we also, of course, want to increase our student achievement. Our desired outcomes for our teachers is what our teachers have been hearing from me and, um, in the last year, all this year, is objective by objective, student by student. Uh, we want our teachers to be able to focus on and know where kids are at all times, especially every week and two weeks, just to know it. At mid-quarter, end-of-quarter is not quite frequent enough. And we feel like technology will be a tool that will enable us to do that. It also allows our staff to collaborate with one another as educators, as well as other educators from, um, other schools, other states, all around the world. Um, it allows our teachers to better meet our students' needs, and it allows our teachers to work smarter and not harder. There's a lot of things where technology gives you access to a lot of information easily, instead of them having to recreate the wheel. And our most important outcome that we want for our teachers is to strengthen our core instruction at South Gravel. We feel like, um, technology as a tool and not just as a showcase and a game is gonna allow us to do that.
Do I have to speak at the microphone? So, how are we gonna do this at South Gravel? Uh, Ms. Cherry told you that our three, five classes are going to be one-to-one. That means one student, one device. They will have that in their hands, available to them. It's immediate access to information. Um, our K-2 classes will have access to two, uh, two carts that they can check out, um, from the library, whole sets or small sets. Um, they have me, I'm the onsite technology facilitator. I'll be there, um, every day this year. I've told them to use me and abuse me. Um, I'll be doing daily and weekly trainings with the teachers, um, personally, one-to-one, um, as teams, uh, grade level teams, and as the whole school itself. Um, that will be in person and trying to get the technology in there. I'll also be doing online video tutorial trainings as well. Um, I have created a one-to-one website that is for the teachers at the school, parents, administration. That's also for you all and the community, um, as a whole, where we will be posting all of our trainings, all the tutorials. The teachers will be blogging, I will be blogging, the administration will be blogging. Um, so, please check that out, I'll definitely get that to you. And, um, it is my plan this year to hold, um, periodic digital family summits, where we bring in the families from the South Gravel community and have the children showcase what they are doing with the technology that we have at our disposal this year.
One of the things that Lauren and I have done this summer, and we work very closely together, with her being the technology facilitator, me being the instructional coach, we have provided training for our staff, we have actually brought them into the school. Um, one of the things we did with them initially was just show them how to use the iPads. Um, what do you do with the iPads? Uh, we've shown them apps they can use in our classroom. Lauren and I actually modeled lessons with them on how to integrate the, um, the iPad into the, um, the daily instruction. One of the things we wanted to drop home with the teachers is this is a tool and a device that you can use in your classroom to enhance your daily instruction. Uh, we've also had aims, which is integrate, um, activities for integrating math and science. We also use the iPad during that process also to increase technology integration. Uh, we encourage our teachers to go to the Tech Fest, it was, um, sponsored by the Technology Department, that had, had multiple sessions on how to use technology and the integration of. We encourage our teachers to go to the CSI, which is the Curriculum Summer Institute also. And because of that, we, um, one of the, uh, presenters at the Curriculum Summer Institute was Kevin Hun, Kevin Hunthut, and he's actually coming to our school on Thursday of this week. We invite the, uh, school board to come out as well. Um, and he's going to address the parents as well as our staff on how to integrate technology and the effectiveness that it has in the classroom and the, um, and the achievement that it will have with the students. We also, um, planning on having a presenter to come in and do some in-depth training with our staff on Stoddy Allen this year, so that we can have, um, a way to monitor instruction in the classroom as well.
Okay, we also have some other initiatives at South Gravel this year, uh, that are related to the collaboration. We did modify our schedule so that the teachers would have at least two days a week that they could come together in their PLCs with extra time, uh, for about 90 minutes, so that they can collaborate on planning. Um, but also with looking at data. We really are data-driven this year, and like Mrs. Cherry said, student by student, objective by objective, that is our goal this year. And this PLC time is when the teachers are gonna come together and look at their data. Uh, we are gonna have some grouping of students that is flexible and that moves around. And, um, let's see, in third through fifth grade, we're actually gonna have our students group for math. They're gonna have a performative assessments, give the assessments, look at the data, look at which children need what, objective by objective. Root those kids together for the math time, and, um, also have some extra help in for the students who were struggling during that time. And once again, those, those groups are gonna change frequently. It's not the kind of thing where you keep the kids in that group for a long period of time. In first grade, we're gonna use, uh, and kindergarten, we're gonna use the CARE model. WH Robinson, we had some teachers visit WH Robinson last year and looked at the CARE model that they have. In first grade, we're actually gonna have a, a reading room, where the first grade teachers will take their classes every day. Uh, this is in addition to their normal reading block. In that room, there will be four adults working with four groups of children. And those groups will be based on the reading 3D data that they've used at that time. Give them the instruction they need, and not only that, those teachers will be modeling for one another effective reading instruction. And I'm, I'm excited about that, we're very excited about that program going in. In the kindergarten, we're also using the CARE model, and that's gonna be more of a, a classroom where we're pushing the extra help into the classroom to help deliver the reading instruction to those groups. Uh, let's see, we will also have built in an enrichment intervention period for the students who are most at risk, and also for students who need, um, to use the technology to research, to take the topics a little bit further. So that was built into the schedules, where we're really excited about the different things that we're trying this year at South Gravel.
When we know better, we do better. My principal says that all the time to us and said, "As a teacher, I'm excited about having these iPads in my classroom, so that we can prepare our students for 21st century skills, for the 21st century careers that, that we are working for." You know, I teach kindergarten, they've got a long way to go, but they start out with me and so I'm trying to get them ready. Um, we have interaction, not with, only within our class with each other, but we're hoping to branch out and go across the county and maybe across the country and collaborate with other classrooms and other students across the world with our technology. Um, we all know that technology shapes the world we're in. I've been teaching 16 or 17 years and, you know, I laugh about the fact that I went to college with a computer typewriter and now they have to give me the laptop. And I have a six-year-old at South Gravel that's going into the first grade, and so the fact that she's going to have some of these experiences to shape her world and give her more exposure to things is something that I'm excited about. And again, we will be looking at student by student and objective by objective, um, to help our children grow and be the best they can be.
We'd like to take the time to thank the board for allowing South Gravel to be the district pilot for technology. We're very excited about that, and we're expecting great things this year.
Thank you. Thank you. This time, uh, do I hear a motion on the presentee?
Some, uh, excuse me.
I have some questions, uh, regarding, uh, some personnel issues that are listed, that I would like to discuss in closed session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
So I move that we, uh, discuss the personnel report in closed session.
Okay. I got a motion, a second, is any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. At this time, uh, ask Allison and.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. We just voted on his motion.
Okay. Minutes. Do I have a motion on the minutes? Bob, you still want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written. Okay.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Allison and Rita. Wellness update?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Amory, you're standing support. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and share with you this. Um, we're, um, Allison's been talking about the staff wellness initiative this past year, but we wanted to give you a little bit of, um, history and presentation, a little bit of information regarding all of ours, for our students and our staff, because we need everybody to be healthy. So, we've taken our each one more initiative and, and obviously moved it to the staff wellness, but if I should just might like to know, and I would like to thank Lauren West, ECU, Chip Davis, Marty Baker, Fran Green, um, these are all folks that have been working with our staff wellness program and are here suffering through the heat to support. We, we work with many, um, agencies, as you know, Biden, ECU, and the Health Department, and, and the history and the history of collaboration was very strong, um, the school system in Pitt County. And internally, you have Community Schools and Recreation, our department, Child Leadership, Health and Physical Education, and our Human Resources, um, Department. We accomplished quite a bit that way also. Uh, we had established a Healthy Schools Task Force in 2003, I'm on the next line, and, um, which is not existent now, but can be called back in if the need is, is there. Um, but since 1999, we have received over $300,000 in funds to support physical activity and nutrition, not staff, not staff wellness, that's, that's for our children. Obviously, we've focused on children for the last 10, 12 years. Um, we're a bit successful. Let me see. Um, so because of the shared vision, everybody thinks it's a good idea for our children to be active. And we're gonna, they're gonna improve their own school, if they get a good meal and, and are physically fit, and so we're not, that's not anything new. Uh, but in Pitt County, we'll just have the ability to work with so many agencies, you know, and, and make a lot of good things happen. Just in this past year, through the community's putting prevention to work. Um, and now, take step two. Uh, the school system, the children in school system were awarded over $365,000. This went to training and the actual program dealing with energizers, um, putting, uh, systems in place to carry on when this money is gone. It will be gone the end of September. Uh, we were allowed to put 12 fitness playgrounds. It's a little different, a little playground, they still play, but we're actually getting physical activity. Um, at 12 schools, we're gonna upgrade walking trails. Um, it included safe routes to schools in the student wellness policy. And then what we're going to speak about now is the staff, uh, excuse me, the system-wide staff wellness program.
Good evening. Good evening, and thanks for allowing us to come back and talk a little bit more about staff wellness. I want to say a special thank you to Heather and Chip Davis for helping put together this video you're about to see for people like Fran Green, or Marty, uh, Baker, our Facility Services staff, our school nurses, and others, and staff that came out during the summer to kind of handle those, um, things. So we can really kind of share with you a summary of the good things going on across our district for staff wellness.
Once the program was established through the grant, um, we started by our staff asking them what kind of things they would help us to do with that money. The way you get teachers to buy into it, the way you get them to actually help plan it, you're the most successful of all. You just hand them something that's, hey, this is what we're doing. If chances are that I get started, they may not be able to. But I think if everybody's involved in the planning stages, then I think that would be what I'd choose. You know, to get it done.
Welcome to our latest retreat. This is our morning prayer. We have our staff and faculty members that we are a family, a family, a family, and there's nothing like that. It's your new beginning, your afterlife. This is our wedding to have used our learning, a place, quiet, safe, centered place where they come and come, the rest of them for a child or seven months. I think I'm a better, but it didn't miss them. Our community of students.
That talks a lot about how to be early, mature, and support, support, and be, and be powerful, and live without, and learn to create, and learn to use a partner, to keep up with the core.
This is definitely because I have to do the weight, what my health says, I do not get diabetes. And so, the school might be even worse, you think, like, work, getting a whole lot whenever I cannot be there at home. I had to be, be busy life, which I know it works sometimes. I might not be able to walk, but being able to walk at work, you know, you know what?
I currently have two racks of stability bars that we use. We have three, the feather bands, this is to be used for shooting, for shooting. We have four track mirrors, we have the water holes, our bikes, and the fire hammers. They walk the track. We came down and marked that off for us. And that's been really, very positive. Lots of our staff members, they're able to walk on their lunch break, walk after work. It's a great way to make some friendships and we're supporting each other. It's just walking around the building together and talking. So that's very positive.
Really take a look at those results, Scott and Metz and the staff have done a great job. And I think what the big message here is staff is important. They see a difference and statistically significant difference in talent in fact that their administrators and even our board and our superintendent support wellness. They support good nutrition. And I think one of the telling things for me is the fact that you see staff are feeling better about their own health. And that is a good indicator of wellness in our system. So we have made positive significant changes. And I think, you know, going forward, we all need to work together and keep the momentum that we have established at this point, keep that moving forward. Again, one of the most exciting things is our new partnership, the fight of medical stroke identification program. We're actually through screening, three screenings in our school systems. That's a true initiative for finalizing the partnership. We can all, our schools will be invited to join the more healthy America program. And again, that's with North Carolina Community Partners and because of the grant from the LAX, it's going to apply that screening to school systems. And again, the businesses and others in the community who might want to be a part of that program cost a significant amount of money. So that's an important clause for us. And again, we all know that wellness is important to every business, every company, every government, like you see, every school system in this country. But when I look at us as public school employees, we have another tremendous opportunity. And that is we are volunteers for 23,000 students each and every day. And our students are watching our staff, especially those poor schools. And they watch and they play model after what they see their teachers and their principals and cafeterias, assistants and bus drivers go out with them. So that gives us another opportunity and another responsibility to our students. We'll be happy to try and answer any questions that you have. We have our phone numbers, Reed and I, our emails. We'd love to come and talk with you when you get this information or questions or if you'd like more information.
I'd like to know the 12 schools that received the fitness equipment. I don't remember those in times past.
They're all locations that house an after-school program. As part of the program at East Carolina, they brought in their staff to do training with our staff. Then they allowed the equipment to be purchased for that. So it's all of our elevens, Eastern, Eastern Dalehurst, Bofflin, Creekside, Lake Forest, Ridgewood.
Walcoes?
Yeah.
Walcoes?
No, Walcoes was not, was not one of the programs because we don't have an after-school program there. Starks, Chicago, G.R. Whitfield.
That's pretty good. Thank you. Just wanted to know the scope of it.
Okay. I have one. Upgrades to the walking trails.
Yes, ma'am.
We had, we got two upgrades to walking trails one day.
Okay, we're actually doing walking trails. We're doing walking trails. Uh, we're doing, uh, but really the trails that make it the most upgrading is where we try to go first. We also try to, to reach out in our community, Northwest, for instance, that, that school is the playground. And it's a physical activity center for that in our community. So we tried to reach out. We've also let general resources and anything that we can pull out. We have other trails that need some upgrades and some resurfacing. So again, this is as much for, for during the day, school hours and after-school use. It really serves both.
Maybe you showed the gym, Alice O'Neal with the treadables and ellipticals. Where was that?
Okay, that, that was a little misleading at the time. Just when you asked that question because that's actually Aidenville School and remember Aidenville has a training which has allowed them to, to purchase a lot of physical activity prior to this grant. But they were actually add, they could add two or three students from this program. The other schools have also been able to purchase equipment and they've also gotten equipment dedicated and not gotten the equipment from the facility. One of the slides you saw, the fitness room, the Chicago, of course, Fay and Marty did a great job at Aidenville. Again, slowly but surely, we'll be on those, those physical activities first.
Okay. And the stroke prevention screening, do you know when the first one of those will occur?
We are finalizing that partnership with the line of medical center and that should, that should start very soon. And again, we have the ability to purchase screening. Our facility services really ask us about that first. And not able to pay dollars for screening for screening and that's pretty expensive. So I came to actually show a home address and said, would you like to think about partnerships in Amsterdam? Because we've met Karen Compton and that's going to be a true initiative for our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reed.
Is anybody else? Thank you, Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. This time, Mark, EPS. So I'm interested if you'd like to share with Eric.
I'm here to, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Emory and Lord. The EPS Board Committee on August the 2nd. In attendance were Board members Mark Richards, Joe Kamens, Benji Forrest, Mary Williams. We discussed five items. It was a very packed meeting, so I'm going to kind of quickly go through these. The first item that we discussed were student records. As you know, NCYS right now collects all the student information that is in the Q records and it's in the computer on a transfer. And so Dr. Nolan presented the proposal of not scanning Q records any longer. Now, the only real concern we had with that is that some colleges still want a health immunizations actual card. We discussed what other counties were doing and so the decision was made to store the Q records this year, not scan them, and then see what type of impact that has, whether or not we had a lot of requests for health cards or if some of the colleges changed what they require. So right now, we're going to agree to do that. The second item was scholarship discussions. At the last board meeting, Mary Williams requested some comparison between demographic grade levels in our schools for seniors and then the scholarship awards. And so Dr. Nolan presented statistics comparing that. The committee looked at some of those numbers and then requested some additional information, basically also a comparison of not just the number of seniors to the number of scholarships, but the number of seniors that were planning on going to a higher education and then how many of those got scholarships. So we're going to continue that discussion at the next committee meeting. Item number three was cursive writing, which it requested information about what we were doing at the present time, current for cursive writing. I did a survey with principals to kind of find out where we were in our implementation of that. It's still being implemented, but it's pretty haphazard. Different grade levels were implemented at different times. It already made the request prior to that that we try to make sure that it gets included somewhere in the curriculum guides, the Common Core curriculum. And so at the curriculum review week, the curriculum guides, we had teachers look at those, at the cursive requirement of cursive writing standards and then kind of look to see whether they could be fitted into Common Core or it would be strategic and helpful. And so they were included in the fifth grade. But the teachers still need to come up together and actually decide what, when, and exactly how long, those kind of things. So that's still going to come back up. As progress is made, Sandra Jones is going to keep us abreast on where the team is and how they're implementing that and in what grade level to start, what kind of process. The fourth item is the school improvement grant request for purchasing technology for the students. We wanted to go ahead and get that PO processed and so that was presented by John Coleman at the last full board meeting for approval and it was approved. And then the last and fifth request was for revision of policy 9.801. Doctor, I mean, Mr. Soderbergh presents us with a routine examination of different policies and procedures on a five-year rotation so that we can look at our policies, see if they need revising. And this was one of those that come up this summer. And so the committee looked at it, made recommendations for revisions, and then approved it to go ahead to the policy committee. Policy committee met on it already and it's in your agenda for tonight for first reading. So any questions about our meeting?
I was happy to be there as a member as well.
Thank you.
I would ask at the last meeting if, if Howard Pitt County failed, were we in the top 10%? Do you have that information?
We, we are still working on that. We are not in the top 10%, but looking at where are we?
Right.
Yes, yes. We had a couple of areas. We were above the state average. We were happy to report in schools, percentage of schools that met growth and percentage of schools that met high growth. But in terms of looking at that and how we do that, whether it's composite score or whatever we're working on, but we'll, we'll get a look at sort of where do we stand.
Stand state.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I was pleased with the request about the cursive handwriting. I know that may seem to some as something that may seem less significant during this time of increased accountability within the course test scores, but it is something that our students need to know how to be proficient in doing. From simply writing or signing a check to being able to communicate with each other. I know so many of our students are communicating now in text and incomplete grammar and so on and so forth, but that is essential for our students to be prepared, particularly high school students that are graduating and wanting to do all this work, to be able to sign their name on legal documents as opposed to just printing their name, which is easily replicated. So I think that the cursive handwriting and some emphasis put on that instruction is important.
Ah, ma'am.
I tend to agree with Mr. Richard Moore.
Likewise.
Okay, if you have no more questions?
Yes, I got one. The follow-up information, I'd like to thank Dr. Nolan for getting that to us and everything that we were able to distinct, distinguish between the number of scholarships that were awarded. We were able to not only do it that way, but also break it down into gender and also race. So once we get those things compiled, then we look at an overall, the overall statistics so we can better gauge on how to get that done. And then hopefully we can come up with the means of getting our scholarship information to all our students. So thank you again.
And I'll be right back. Over to Bethany Trubuck for CTE.
I'm here to ask for, for the CTE plan. You guys received this big notebook and this is all our performance indicators and our strategies are written in there. But I would like to also take the time to let you know some awesome things that are going on with CTE and that's a little handout that you also have. Currently, we have 2,861 students enrolled in CTE for this coming school year. But the great thing is it's 41.4% of our high school students. We also have 9,828 potential credits that CTE will give our students this coming school year. So we're real excited about that. Unofficially, the proficiency for CTE last year was 83.24%, which is up from 89.1%. So kudos to our teachers for working with our students. This is another area that I'm real excited about is credentialing. 1,571 students walked out of my classroom last year with a credential, with a certificate saying, "I passed a credentialing test." And you'll see that the areas were Word, PowerPoint, Excel, Word Expert, served by nursing assistants, that Ms. Crane Brain is one of our teachers back there who prepares our kids for that. First aid, CPR, service aid, OSHA, NCCRC Core, which stands for National Center for Construction Education, and early childhood lead teacher. We had nine first place winners and two state officers that attended national competition for our career technical student organizations, which we are real excited about that. We are currently planning right now for Construction Career Day, which we're pairing up with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And they are bringing in large equipment to the fairgrounds, November 14th and 15th. And I invite you guys to attend. It's going to be a fun event that we're hosting for the entire Northeast region. So we're real excited about that. As you guys know, Workkeys is a part of our accountabilities. We have partnered with Pitt Community College and they have given us access to their software that they have purchased, Career 101 and Key Train. And they're giving us access to sample questions so we can get our kids ready for the Workkeys test. We are, our students are tested in locating information, applied math and reading for information. And last year, we found that a lot of our students were not as prepared in locating information. We were really good in reading for information and applied math, but our locating information was not as good. So we're trying to help that. We're going to do bell ringers and like exit tickets in our CTE classes, which is, which is going to help our students out. Even though we were cut six months of employment by the state, we were able to keep all our positions and give our students, give our, our schools their request allotment, which we were really, really pleased about. Our major expenditures this year will be our staff development and update equipment due to some of our major curriculum changes. And lastly, because of the new Perkins draft and the business partnership, partnership component required, CTE is going to work this year to build strong partnerships in our community. So that's what I have.
Great, great.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, I think Pitt Community College was going to partner with Pitt County Schools with a welding program at Aiden River.
Yes.
And that was canceled.
It was not canceled.
What happened?
What happened is we, they were allotting the money, but whenever they were, Mr. Baker, you help me out here, when it got down to it with the facility, the old welding shop was now the agriculture shop and the duck work and the, the air filter system and all that was not ready. So it's a facility thing that we're working on and it's not canceled. It's just postponed until, until we can get the facility ready and then, you know, then we'll go from there.
Because they were going to provide the equipment.
They were.
And I think about 15, 17 kids are tied up for that and that's just something I wanted to.
Right, right. Well, we, we still have it in the planning, but it's, it, our facility was not ready to help at day one, so.
Sounds good.
And, oh, they're saying on this backside of this, by the way, these are, this is all good statistics. I commend you and all the career technical education teachers in Pitt County Schools for the job that seemed to be well done. I, I was just curious on this first bullet on the backside, said we were cut six months of employment by the state and the state formula for career technical education didn't change this year. So does that reflect a decrease in our ADM or exactly what, what does that entail?
That would, that would be a decrease in our ADM that allowed for us to be cut six months.
So we had a decrease, was it based on last year or was it based, well, it's got to be based on last year because ADM is, is counted on the 20th day, correct? So is that based on last year versus the year before?
I'm not quite sure what I, I'll be honest with you. I went to the DPI website and pulled up our planning and that's what, it, I compared last year's with this year and that's where the six months came from.
Actually, I think it's the higher the first two months.
Well, for us, regularly, it's a three-year average, isn't it, Michael? And I don't know if that applies to CTE or not.
Actually, so what they do is they take your last year's actual ADM and they do a, they project your, next year's ADM and they take the veteran too and call that your projected ADM and then they wait for day twenty to adjust it. And if it's 100 above or below, then they will adjust it. If it's within 100 above or below, they won't adjust it. It's increase or decrease. So basically that allotment is based off the projected number of students and grades in from twelve at this point, at this point.
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, then this is based on what they say our projection ADM is going to be. But our grades eight through 12.
Exactly.
And so is it then possible that if our ADM increases more than what they project, that we could gain those months back?
It's a potential. I've not ever seen that, but it's, it's.
Okay.
Matter of fact, the last couple of years, we've had to, to deal with a reduction in our allotments because ADM complained. Last year, we actually sent, had to, the state took back positions and dollars from Pitt County Schools due to the fact that the ADM did not come in to what was originally projected. I'm hoping that the state has had a conservative projection for this year so that won't happen again, but given the way that we budget, the conservative manner in which we budget, I plan for that so that when they take positions back, they don't actually impact people because I've tried to do a cushion in there to make sure that don't.
Anybody else got any questions? Did you like to make a motion? Mark stepped out of the room.
I believe that we accept the CTE plan as presented.
Set.
I got a motion to say, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wolf, Policy Committee?
Rob. We did not have a forum at our last meeting, but we did address several policies. And these are policies that were addressed that were basically cut and dry. There wasn't anything really that we could negotiate on. Also, we did talk about dress code some. Rob, do you want to report?
A little bit on the dress code.
Yes, over the summer, the Policy Committee directed me to meet with a group of principals and APs and others and get some, just some initial input on some issues with the school uniform. At the last policy meeting, I reported back to some of those details and though there was not a quorum, again, the consensus of the group was, pose that the entire board consider like setting up like an action group like we had last year about graduation that Ms. Owens initially led to look at and evaluate any current issues with the school uniform policy and possibly make some recommendations back to the board concerning that. And that was something that Mr. Forbes and us and others at the meeting talked about bringing up tonight.
Because I feel like we need some students, teachers involved, the administrators, and also the administrators were not in favor of changing the logos. That was one item. Earlier, it was brought up. They did not want to change that policy. In fact, they didn't want to change any of the policy basically except for the shirt tail, I think, had something that they wanted to look at. But I felt like it was also important that we had at least two board members on that committee. Does anyone, is there anyone that would like to volunteer? Mary?
Mm-hmm.
You?
Christine.
Okay.
Christine.
Christine.
Well, if you want to.
Well, we really didn't come up with a specific number. If you want to serve, that's fine. And if one of you would be looking at the committee chair of that committee.
Or so to be a separate group.
No, it's going to be one group.
Okay.
You're just a part of the administrators and the students and so forth.
I was going to ask.
Would someone like to chair that group from the three?
I have a question.
Okay.
Help me understand, I mean, I, I just volunteered for, but what is the driving force behind looking at the policy again?
Part of it had to do with some of the, few board members wanted to look at the teachers' card, the dress code.
That was my question. I'd be very happy to chair this committee.
Okay.
So we're looking at staff dress code, possibly at a staff dress code.
Mary spoke on that.
But we have not, we did not get an overwhelming response from our administrators that there was any problems for them with the student dress code, except for shirt tails. So that's really, we're not going to start from scratch looking at this. We're just.
No.
No, we're just looking at letting the principals and teachers be the example to the students. So if they're wearing uniforms, then the kids will know who to look at when they have questions about uniforms. Parents will know who to look at when they have questions about uniforms because the teachers and administrators can set the standard for their schools. And they already basically wear the school shirts with the monologues and logos and things like that on them already. So if the parent or the teacher have a question, then all they have to do is look at the principal and the teacher.
So Jill, we're really not looking at read man.
We're not going to go to that item.
Because the, even the principals, everything was fine.
I want to make that on the record that we are not voting, I don't want students to think that we may reconsider having.
Looking at any changes for this year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I got several concerns from both administrators and parents that, the thing that I really want the group to focus on and I appreciate those that volunteered for it because it's another one of those thankless jobs that has to be done. But it, the key to me in the concern was the shirt tails, the girls versus the guys.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I challenge.
And the discipline that occurs with that.
Yep.
So we need to look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate those volunteers.
You're welcome.
And again, this committee will be made up of students, representative of students, teachers, administrators and so forth, and parents. And Rob, we look at getting that committee together along with the chair.
My understanding is if you want to see something like Ms. Owens had during last year with graduation, similar format.
We want input on this when we're looking at dress code for the.
So. Congratulations, the graduation task force.
And Ms. Owens had gone to graduation task force last year. She had a group of.
A little child.
How do you think I can example?
Okay.
All right, looking at our policies, the policy 9.801, if you look at that, basically the top part is really not applicable to what we are doing now in the, in politics of it, is that all schools and classrooms teach the North Carolina courses study as the way it is written now. That the curriculum guides is actually created and used by all Pitt County teachers. And then there is a systematic review of those guides. And also that there is a systematic review through data monitoring, monitoring and analysis to determine the impact of student progress. So the last paragraph really takes the place of everything above that. And this is for first reading. The, um, next policy, non-resident students, if you want to go into that.
Yes, the direction I had from the Policy Committee to develop this proposal for the entire board is to revise our policy that Pitt County Schools no longer accept tuition students. So basically what I've done in the first policy on page 28 is that I deleted most of the policy, added a paragraph at the beginning, basically two sentences saying, "We do not accept non-resident tuition students. Non-resident students may not attend unless otherwise qualified." That was the direction I had from the Policy Committee in drafting. The next policy just dealt with tuition and if it's the board's wish to not accept tuition students, then the board no longer needs that next policy. So essentially, your vote next meeting, if it's your desire, would be to rescind that policy.
Now, when we're looking at seniors, in the past, we have granted seniors to finish out. out that year. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions on ten point one oh four.
Yes.
But looking at the first page toward the bottom, that got marked out, some conditions that permit a non-resident student to, blah, blah, blah. Number three, the parent or legal guardian of the student is employed by the school system. I would like to have it that employees of Pitt County schools, if they are living in another county and they are coming here, I think it would be beneficial if their children could come to Pitt County schools. I would ask that that be left in the policy, that that be...
Is that covered in the different policy?
I'm going to check if that's maybe covered in other policies. If it's not, Sean, I'll make sure.
I just want to make sure that remains the case.
But I believe we have a separate policy dealing with where... But I'll make sure it's covered. At the good point, I'll make sure that we make sure that's addressed.
And that would, if you have that, I believe we have it in employee privilege, the language at the top that covers federal, state law, and/or board policy.
And then the last statement of the policy, each principal shall be responsible for determining that no student is enrolled in school in violation of this policy. That sounds good to leave in there to me, but I don't know what his feeling is on that.
Well, technically, wouldn't it be transparent through NCYS, for central office to make that determination? Principals have got a lot on them as it is.
As long as the address is good.
Well, but we have to, we have to go with that going assumption anyway, unless otherwise determined.
We just had a hearing about a student that spent most of the year at the wrong school.
But we found out about it. We found that out. Still found out.
This doesn't have anything to do with that. This doesn't, this doesn't apply to that. That statement you just made, it doesn't apply to this. This, he applies to the fact that we went through policy to change it for a student, and a student no longer is a student here. You know what this is about? I didn't think it was about anything. Yes. It is. It is transparent. It is the same thing we did when we allowed that little girl to come here. I have a little idea. I have no idea.
Rob?
Goodbye. I need to learn why. Yeah. I need to learn why we don't want to do this anymore, when we just meant and allowed this to happen for a student.
Well, this was discussed in the first session of one of the previous boards, the entire board.
That no child should affect their boys.
Yes, but I don't think it'd be appropriate at this point to discuss.
You balled it up.
It was the board's, it was the board's wishes in that discussion, because the policy didn't speak one way or the other, and you really had no guidance to say yes or no. It was left open. I believe the request was for it to go to the Policy Committee. So now it's up for you to decide, do you want it to say yes or no.
Well, you know, my statement on this is, in recalling that earlier meeting, is that, you know, tuition paid to the school system is meant to supplement what the tax-paying parent of the county is not paying. That's the exact amount of money. That's the difference. You know, it's common practice of school systems to allow students that I know of in districts that are neighboring to us, to allow those students to come in and pay their tuition. Typical, those students don't cause issues, discipline-wise. Their parents tend to be involved, in my experience, at a higher rate. I personally don't have a problem with parents from other areas that want to come in and pay tuition to attend our school system. That's just my personal feeling on that. I'm not saying that, you know, when it comes up for a vote, I'll express my opinion that way. But just looking at the policy, I personally don't have a problem with our tuition-paying parents that we have in the district. I don't know that we have an exorbitant amount that are causing swings in sizes of schools and spaces or anything that way. I don't know that it's, again, a massive issue, but I think it's something that benefits our district in terms of them paying their fair share of what they would normally be paying if they were tax-paying citizens of Pitt County.
Ms. Chair, I have a question for Kelly. Over the last year, how many requests have we had pertaining to this? Just that one? Yeah. Do it before. Yes. Okay. Thank you, Kelly.
And the amount that is charged is what?
It's calculated, it's yearly by the Finance Department. There's information on how it's done in tuition exceptions in that policy one point one oh five.
Roughly?
Fourteen seventy-five per year.
Yes.
Per student.
Per student.
Jill, you have a question?
Yes. So we don't currently have any non-resident students. So Wolf made the point that we usually grandfather seniors, but I would say that if we have a junior who's a carryover from years ago when we did this, that we should let them continue and finish the exit grade of the school they're in. I would, I would advocate for that, instead of saying seniors only.
Mr. Baker, I hate to put you on the spot, but Ms. Wellington brought up an interesting point. There are two. She references to David Griffin. Maybe one, do you understand maybe who she's possibly referencing?
Yes, I do.
Are there any discipline or academic issues with those students or that student?
Mark, it would be appropriate as for, if that person's getting in front. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to pretend.
I understand it. Thank you.
In clarification to Mark, I think one of the reasons we discontinued non-resident is that it was having an impact on some of our schools, particularly Stokes, which is a very small school and is out on the edge of the county and was a popular, and we, our space there was already very tight. That, I'm just, I'm not saying that necessarily right or wrong, but that was part of the rationale.
I'm saying that air space allows.
Exactly. But somehow or other, we ended up with a lot of non-resident students at Stokes, and it was the problem.
I think if the board wishes to look at this, to open the gate...
That's what you would be doing.
This needs a lot of extensive work and very clear and articulated language. You've heard from two people tonight who are concerned about a very, we have a, we have a clear process for transfers within the district. And I think we need to be very clear about what coming in as a tuition student looks like. In my opinion, our allegiance is to those who live here and we already serve. If we're talking about that, and that's the wishes of the board, then I think this needs a lot of work, because I don't think we, we need a policy that has any ambiguity in it at all. Is it only open enrollment schools? We have unitary status to consider. We have a lot of underlying issues, and I'm not saying do it or don't do it. I'm just saying, if it's the, if it's the wishes of the board to consider allowing this, this needs a lot of study and a lot of work with some very technical guidance about how you would do that.
I also know down in Chicago that there would be a lot of students that would attend Chicago.
Yeah.
It's already crowded. So I give full support of us not accepting any student other than the senior. And if the board wants to go with, you said, a junior.
I would say if there's a exit grade. I would say exit grade.
Exit grade. So if they were freshmen, first year, sophomore, if they were sophomore, they could continue.
Or maybe we can get that information before we decide. Since there's only a few, maybe we can, maybe we just have that information.
Well, I also think that's another place you could be, which is, there's a difference in a student who goes to school here for eight, nine years and moves versus someone who lives in a different county who's petitioning to come here and go to school. And you might want to look at that difference in terms of, do we want something in place that allows a panel or the board to hear the case of the student? I'm just, I'm just saying, that's the big difference to me. There's a difference in someone who goes here through the seventh grade and wants to finish middle school versus somebody who's just saying, I want to come from a different county and go to school here.
You know, we might need to take this back to policy.
We do. I feel strongly about that, because, I mean, I just don't try to work.
That we need to take this back.
We need to go back.
Because we have for years not allowed any students to come in this district, except, again, grandfather. You're only talking about page one? Talking about one student in the last several years? How many years? Five. Okay.
I move we refer to ten point one oh four and ten point one oh five back to policy.
Come in. Ms. Chair.
Yes. Jill?
I was going to suggest that the next time we meet, we'll have a second reading. And if it, if the board wishes to say no non-resident students, then the policy will pass. If the board doesn't wish to say no non-resident students, then the policy won't pass, and then it can go back to the Policy Committee. So why not just leave it, have the second reading, and then the board's wishes will be known.
Jill, would you like a motion?
Okay. We'll leave it as is.
Okay.
Then that will be the first reading. Then, let's see, of course, that would be away with ten point one oh one, if they pass that policy. And, let's see.
Next one is actually ten point one oh one, on page thirty-two. And that's what we took out, the no child left behind question, on page three of that policy. And this is on page thirty-four. We took out the no child left behind, because that's no longer a factor. Those students correctly take them on. Those students who are already attending that school, they can continue through exit grade, and they provide their own transportation.
Yep.
Yep. So that's the change we need. So it's one okay for sure.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wolf.
Thanks.
At this time, we will have board discussion, request regarding proposal amendments of the bylaws one point one oh five. Jill?
You have a copy of bylaw one point one oh five in front of you. It's titled Board Organization. This proposal would add an item E that deals with the removal of the chair or the vice chair. Over the last couple of months, the fact that we do not have a policy that addresses this particular issue has become problematic. And so four of us have proposed this as a solution to that problem. We try very hard to have our bylaws cover every situation that might arise, and this is one that we have not had covered.
Jill, you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve this bylaw addition.
I got a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Yes.
I would just like to say, since this was introduced at the last meeting, and to me, it was in the paper about it, the phone calls I received in support of it include the fact that, and just even tonight, many times the word example or set standards comes up for our teachers and our for students, and that we too should be held accountable under the same, setting the same examples and standards. The other comments I've received is to be consistent with our own policies for our teachers and for our staff and for ourselves. Why should we be exempt of any of those policies of accountability? Another statement was, wouldn't it be hypocritical to our own policies and to those that we suspend or expel in our system for bullying or any other egregious acts that might affect the classroom performance? That, therefore, wouldn't that be, shouldn't we be held to the same consequences on our board? Thank you.
Okay. Rob?
At our five o'clock meeting, Ramona Miller was here from the North County School Board Association. And I thought so many of her comments were pertinent to tonight about us. And one statement was so outstanding, and she said that school boards are one of the purest forms of our democracy. And that is what we are. We're a democratic group of individuals who have, who have put our name on the ballot, and we have been elected. And she also said that leadership can be like a body of water, a flood or a river. And so I think that's a pretty good description of us. And I'm hoping that we can come to the table tonight, not being a flood, but being a river, a river of democracy for all the schools in this county and for everybody out there who is worried about the situation that exists and would like for us to move forward and to be the purest form of democracy for Pitt County. And that's what I'm hoping we can do as we come to this table this evening.
Christine?
In reference, in reference to a body of water being a flooding river, a flooded water goes any direction. It overcomes everything in its path. If we all worked together, we had a current that was working for the same purpose, we would be a river. And that's what we should be working towards common goals. This board is hopelessly fragmented. Public trust is at its lowest. And at the very least, we need to take a stand for the school system that we profess to want to work for the better of and pass this amendment tonight.
Wolf? I received, too, a lot of calls and conversation from people that had email and telephone calls, people that had come by, people that have talked with me during church, people that have approached me at restaurants, because they all heard me very loud and clear in the last meeting when I said I didn't have a comment. Well, I did have a comment. But I felt at that time, cooler head should prevail than prevailed at that last meeting. I was very ashamed and very disappointed at our previous meeting. When we sit at this board and we all put our names down to run for this office, we all knew that we were going to have different ideologies, whether they be conservative, liberal, different opinions on what the superintendent should do from time to time, different opinions on what policies we should enact. But one of the things that we all agreed to do, or should have agreed to do, is that when we elected a chair, that we would stand behind our chairman, and that we would act with dignity and decorum at our meetings. And I'm not reading from any prepared statement. I'm speaking from my heart and from my mind of what I know's right. But I, what I will say about this whole process and this whole situation, I've been very disappointed in my two years that I've been on this board, at the lack of being able to get along and get together as a board, have collegiality, and to be able to respect each other, and at the end of the day, be able to agree to disagree. And that, to me, has been very disappointing for our staff and for our students and for this entire community. If you disagree with someone, don't say that that person is not able to be of a capacity to be able to lead, that that person is not competent to be able to lead. We have students in our schools that are EC, that have many difficulties and impairments, but they still come to our school facilities each and every day, given all they have, because someone is country, or because someone may not have words that are as polished as someone else, or able to put their ideas together as well as others. That's no reason to try and lynch them at every turn and every point that we have on this board. And I find no end more often that we have conflicting views, conflicting ideologies that are twisted for the public's perception. News media notified to be in attendance at meetings, letters leaked. It's inappropriate. If you're sniping at someone long enough, you'll eventually get them. They'll either give up, or they'll turn in the towel because they're embarrassed, or they're tired of being run through the mud. There've been issues that I've brought to the forefront with this board, and I've asked the superintendent to address them. I haven't always agreed with the results, but I haven't come to you and said I want the superintendent to resign, because I feel she's ineffective, because she didn't do along with what I thought. If there's an administrator in this county that's not doing their job, and someone thinks they may not be doing their job, what would you do? My guess is, you may ask someone to investigate it, or someone may say, I think this needs to be looked at. From what I gather of this situation, it's been drawn to the much recent... From what I gather of this situation that's been drawn to the much recent board member's attention, is that's what happened. County commissioner got involved, another board got involved, and investigated it. That's what happened. But to point blank say that someone is out to get someone, and therefore we need to call for a bylaw change, is not appropriate. If someone disagrees with Allen Thomas, if someone disagrees with a member of the state legislature, and if the Democrats disagree with what Republicans are doing in the state legislature, are they going to try and get rid of our Speaker, our President? Are they going to try and get rid of the head of the House of Representatives? They may want to, but the way to do that is at the ballot box, not to continue to dispute each other and to carry on inappropriately. What I will say, in my two years on this board, what I had hoped we would be discussing more of is how to increase rigor in our AP courses, how to expand opportunities for students across our district, how to address the extreme poverty that exists in portions of our county, how to retain better administrators in our county, support them, nurture them, how to expand our programs for our students with disabilities. But instead, there's been a lot of infighting, and that's disappointing, because it doesn't serve a single student, it doesn't serve a single teacher, they're struggling on a daily basis. And I have a feeling some love to see this continue to go on, and it's inappropriate, and it must stop. Chairman's term is up in December. If we elect a new chairman and we disagree with him, we move until we can get done. But that's what needs to take place, because we could ever be in a self-perpetuating cycle of turning over chairs to agree with different ideologies, and that's not appropriate. And that's my piece.
Thank you, Mark. You got a motion on the floor? Okay, go ahead.
I'm not going to turn back my hands of time to the last meeting. Perhaps Mr. Richard wants to, I don't. I do want to look forward on this board, I always have. For me, this bylaw change represents the future. That, you know, when we change bylaw 10, 12, 15 years from now, that's what we look at. Everything about Mr. Richard's comments I addressed on August 6th. I don't intend to replay them. But I will say this, I have learned in the political realm, when you want to deviate away from a topic, what you do is say, "I wish we could focus on what's important." In other words, you say, "Your point of view is not what's important, and how this is what's important, because maybe you don't want to discuss this topic." And I'm sorry, everything we do on this board is important to the students and the families of Pitt County. And for me, I've received a lot of emails from teachers and administrators, central office staff, in the past couple of weeks, that we're all positive, and that's fine. What people don't see is that Mr. Peaton and I are working together today for a couple hours on several issues, and we'll continue to, because that's what we're here for. But don't ever second guess why I'm on this board or anyone else. I think we all know why we're here. Again, I won't turn back the hands of time, but I'd like to look at changing the bylaw for the future. We happen to have an example, that's recent, but I don't want to replay that example. That's not the point. The point is, should something come up in 2018, would there be any sort of policy and procedure to deal with it? I would even recommend we look at having an agreements committee on this board to potentially address such issues, instead of delving in on one individual very awkwardly. It's borderline not fair. And I think as a governing body, we're obligated to examine that. That's it.
I got a motion on the floor.
I would just like to add to the comments that have already been made, that we do very important things around this table. I do believe we continue to work together. I don't believe that this is just a matter of personal disagreement, because I think all of us are able to put that behind us when we're making important decisions. But I also deeply believe that ethics are critically important in the leadership of this school system. We heard Alice and Rita talk about the example that is set for our students, and I think we are part of that example. And we believe that, I believe that ethical behavior is an important piece of public education.
Got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand right hand.
Motion does not carry without a count of five.
Okay. At this time, I'll call on superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Just a couple of items. I want to say thank you to the South Greenville folks who are here tonight. I wanted to affirm for the board, Kevin Honeycutt is presenting at 5:30 this Thursday for your parents, is that correct? Oh, 4 o'clock, 4:30, I'm sorry, 4:30. I would really encourage you, this guy is awesome, very entertaining, very down-to-earth. In a very short period of time, we walked away with a whole lot of great ideas for being more efficient and improving instruction, and we're delighted that he can come back and we can share him with both the staff and the parent community. So I would invite you this Thursday, the 23rd, at 4:30. Also, I wanted to be sure that board members were aware, I'm not sure if you got a personal invitation, that this Friday night is the dedication of the field at Farmville Central, and there's a 6 o'clock event for anybody who's interested prior to that dedication at halftime of the Farmville Central, South Central football game, just to be sure you were aware. We are already into fall sports season, it's hard in this heat to think about that, but we encourage folks to get out and support their teams. I do want to, again, reiterate, open house this Thursday evening. That's staggered times, depending on what age your children are, it's an opportunity to get out, see schools and meet teachers, and we look forward to seeing folks at open house. Last Friday, I began my 36 schools in four-day tour, and I just want to say, it really does the heart good to see our staff back in place, the energy and excitement in our buildings. It's oh-so awesome to be able to pat people on the back for the great job that they did last year, and there's just an awful lot of good and positive to be able to commend them for. Several of those items I do want to mention, both publicly, and I know our board is aware, due to the fact that we've had significant grant funding, we have been able this year, as we did last year, to offer an entire week of new teacher orientation and induction. That occurred week before last and culminated on the Friday before with new staff welcome. 125 new teachers this year, which I believe is a good economic indicator for our district, and we're very impressed with the new group coming in. That Friday, we also had Tech Fest. We had all-time high attendance at Tech Fest this year, and you all know that no one gets paid to attend that. Teachers and staff members come because they, I think, like all the great door prizes, but also because they get awesome opportunities to learn throughout the course of the day. And then our curriculum, our CSI ended last week, our Curriculum Summer Institute, which was also, we had the highest attendance ever. And I want to thank Tom Feller and Cheryl's staff for just excellent opportunities for all of us to learn every single day. We had engaging opportunities to learn about how we can deliver common core and essential standards in this district. And again, I want to thank the literally hundreds of teachers who gave up their time without compensation, I might add, when they might rather be in classrooms getting ready to take advantage of those opportunities. We really are excited that we had race to the top money to be able to do this. It afforded us an opportunity to bring some specialty folks here that we haven't always had the opportunity to do. And most importantly, a week from today, August 27th, the doors open, the buses roll. We're very excited to welcome our students back to a new school year. So, thank you.
Thank you. I challenge each and every one of the board members to attend as many open houses as you possibly can next Thursday. Last year, I made all of mine in my district, so I challenge each and every one of you. Gentlemen?
I'm looking forward to all the open houses, and congrats to one of our very own Rose High graduates who won a gold medal in our Olympics this year, Lauren Perdue. She was a successful student at UVA, and was really a proud moment for our community and our schools that she did that. Right now, we have several Pitt County students playing in the 13-year-old World Series in Washington State right now, so good luck to them. And Rockon, South Greenville, near and dear to my heart. My children were educated there, and I do love that school, and I think that this is a great step for future education for our students. Best wishes to all the students and staff, the teachers, everybody for the upcoming year. And I encourage all the parents to join their PTAs at their schools, or Booster Club, or whatever it is that you're interested in, and help teachers with their supplies, with their wish list, just morale, teacher appreciation, the whole nine yards, and start with you all for the bang with support.
Mark?
That was a good, that was a good beginning. I would like to say that I'm looking forward to the open houses, which I've always enjoyed, and it's been a privilege for me this summer to be able to walk past four of the schools in our district, and they have been working hard to get ready, and so it's been a joy.
May?
No comment.
Chief?
Just to echo Jennifer's remarks, I'd like to say, welcome back to the staff and students and to the parents. We can't do it without you, you are part of this team.
Well, I just want to say, tonight, the board has spoken, and I think that we need to move forward. The parents and students and faculty, they deserve. We need to move forward, just as the earlier presentation that we heard before the board. We need to move forward with a clear vision and a sharp focus to channel the district's people, energy, finances, and resources to educate the students and focus on student achievement. That is our responsibility, and that is what we should do from this point forward. I would also like to bring up that we do need to remember Dr. Frazier, administrator, and his family in that loss, Dr. Frazier, and also Lauren Perdue. I'm wondering if she's the first student that we've had that has competed in the Olympics?
I don't know.
But that is really an achievement that we should congratulate her, and also in swimming, and that brings to light the swimming in our district also.
Well, worth a credit mention about Dr. Frazier, and that was certainly an untimely loss. Dr. Frazier was a wealth of knowledge and the service that he'd given to the district through Red Rose High School. Also, the custodian that was lost from M. Rose, I have heard from numbers of people, students and staff, one story that was shared with me was a new teacher that had begun work at that school, and he would provide gifts for new teachers out of his own pocket. In fact, for one new teacher, he knew there was a stock of book that she wanted to have for her students, and he left her a $20 bill on her desk so that she could get a new book to have to use with her students. Now that, you know, for someone that's already not making a big salary, is a huge sacrifice, and from what I understand, he enjoyed doing that. And that is, that speaks volumes about the type of people that we have working in this district. But that gentleman's name, I wish I could call it by name, call him by name now.
Jack D.
I'm sorry?
Danny.
Jack D. What a tremendous loss to this school system and the staff at that school. That would be felt for years to come, I am sure. But one thing about opening a school, and I share this with my staff and my community, is that there's four quarters of responsibility in a child receiving a good education in any school. 25% of that responsibility rests squarely on the shoulders of the principal of that school. The other 25% rests solely on the shoulders of a teacher that that child may have. Another 25% rests with the student, and the other quarter rests with the parent. A full 50% rests with the school system, and another 50% rests with the child and that parent to be involved, to be engaged, to ask questions, to work on homework at night, to read with your child. And I know that we have children that come from families where that does not happen, and we need people to step in and to help with that, so that every child in our system can receive an equal opportunity to get a great education.
Christine?
No comment.
We have operations next Monday at 5 o'clock. I just want to remind the operations committee, I'd like to welcome everyone back to school. It's an exciting time for the whole community. And then lastly, I'd just like to ask everyone to keep the Carr family in their thoughts that suffered a terrible tragedy in the past 24 hours here in Greenville. That was once again, another terrible horrific event that has plagued our community lately. And as a school system, as we're molding young minds to go out into the future, it's important for us to have boundaries in place and standards, with the hopes that people become productive citizens and not engage in these senseless acts once again. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's an exciting time for Pitt County schools. Schools be starting back next week, and I know that there are 23,000 students, thousands of faculty and staff and parents that are very, might be a little bit unnerving in some respects, but always very positive, exciting, that goes along with the reopening of a school. And I do appreciate that and acknowledge that, and look forward to being a part of another school year. I wanted to say, in closing, that I had the opportunity to know George Frazier a long time before I sat on this board. And one of the things that I admired about Mr. Frazier more than anything else was his ability to sincerely and deeply care about everybody he came in contact with. And I was talking to a group of teachers this past week, and we asked, I asked them, why did they choose education? And none of them mentioned anything about money. They didn't choose education because of money.
That's for sure.
They chose education because there's something more valuable than money. That's the young people that we work with, that we're responsible for, that we set examples for. And, you know, that's the thing that our legacy and the legacy of all the parents and all the teachers have, and that is the opportunity to give to these young people the ability so that they, in turn, can become very, very precious and valuable citizens of Pitt County and North Carolina. So it's an exciting time for us to be able to continue to help be a part of that for those 23,000 students.
As Chairman, I believe that we go into a closed session to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under 115(c)402, North Carolina General Statutes and Regulations, and under Federal 20 U.S.C. 1232G, the regulation or laws of the United States, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, parentheses A, parentheses 1, and to establish or to instruct the staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the amount of compensation or other items of an employment contract, North Carolina General Statute number 143-218.11, that, parentheses A, parentheses 5.
Second. We have discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.